To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. Councilmember Losi.
Here.
Councilmember Mobley.
Here.
Mayor Protam Johnson.
Here.
Mayor Trent.
Here.
Okay, our first item is introduction of our newest police officer.
Thank you, Mayor Trent. Good evening, council. So it is my esteemed privilege and honor tonight to introduce the newest member of the Fortuna Police Department. Kikoah Blaisdell has come to us from the Humboldt County Sheriff's Office where he's been working the last two years as a correctional officer. It's been Kikoah's dream to make a transfer at some point into municipal policing and we're just honored that he chose Fortuna. We chose Kikoah for his strong values and outstanding character and expect good things from this young man. He graduated from the local police academy at CR and holds a bachelor's degree in biology from Cal Poly. If you can't tell by looking at him, the kid enjoys martial arts and weightlifting. So at some point, we'll be looking to add him to our defensive tactics instructor program. Here with him tonight, we have his lovely wife, Yvette. And we're going to do something a little different tonight. We had kind of a scheduling mishap when he was sworn in by the mayor on April 22nd. So we're going to do the ceremonial penning. So at this time, I'd like to invite you both into the well. And photos. So at this time, I'd like to invite Kikoah to the podium to make a few remarks and please help me in joining him to City of Fortuna. Thank you.
I just wanted to thank the Fortuna Police Department for giving me this opportunity to come and work for this beautiful city. And I just appreciate you guys coming out and supporting me. And yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Welcome aboard.
Welcome to the best police department in Humboldt County. Okay, our next item is a proclamation for National Police Week. National Police Week, May 12th through May 18th, 2024. Whereas in 1962, President John F. Kennedy signed a proclamation which designated May 15th as National Police Officers Memorial Day and the week in which that date falls as National Police Week. And whereas law enforcement officers are guardians of life, property, defenders of the individual rights of a free people, soldiers in the war against crime, and dedicated to the preservation of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Whereas it is known that every two days, an American police officer has died in the line of duty. Our community joins with other cities and towns to honor all police officers wherever and everywhere. And whereas, I need to make this bigger here. Whereas the City of Fortuna desires to honor the valor, service, and dedication of our police officers. And now therefore, I Tammy Trent, Mayor of the City of Fortuna, proclaim the week of May 12th to May 18th, 2024, to be National Police Week and call upon all citizens to give special honor and sincere appreciation to the police officers of this city by deed, remark, and attitude. I further call upon the citizens to make every effort to express our gratitude to the men and women who make it possible for us to leave our homes and families in safety each day and return knowing our property. Wait a minute, return, I lost my place here. Return knowing they are protected by people willing to sacrifice their lives if necessary to guard our loved ones' property and government against all who would violate the law. Signed this day, June 6th, May 2024, at City of Fortuna, State of California. And our police chief is going to accept this.
Okay, seems like I was just up here. Good evening, honorable counsel, esteemed colleagues, and citizens of Fortuna. I have prepared a few remarks this evening with regard to the proclamation. I'd just like to say that witnessing the National Police Officer Memorial for the first time evokes a range of emotion and leaves a lasting impact on a police officer. Finally, after about 25 years, I got to see it for the first time in my career during my recent time at the National Academy. The weight of sacrifice settles heavy on your shoulders and stands as a stark reminder of the dangers inherent to the law enforcement profession. Suffice to say this year, this proclamation means just a little bit more. It is with immense gratitude that I accept this proclamation on behalf of the Fortuna Police Department as we commemorate National Police Week. This recognition serves not only as a testament to our dedication but also as a reflection of the unwavering support we receive from our community. National Police Week holds a profound significance to law enforcement officers across our nation. It is a time to honor the valor, sacrifice, and commitment of those who wear the badge. It is a moment to remember those who have made the ultimate sacrifice in the line of duty and to stand in solidarity with their families. In Fortuna, we are fortunate to serve in a community that values and respects the vital role of law enforcement in maintaining public safety and upholding the rule of law. This unwavering support empowers us to confront the challenges of our profession with courage and integrity every single day. As we observe National Police Week, let us renew our commitment to fostering strong partnerships with the community. Together, we can continue to build trust, enhance public safety, and create a safer, more vibrant Fortuna for the generations to come. On behalf of the Fortuna Police Department and my office, I extend my heartfelt gratitude to the City Council and to the entire community for this honor and for your ongoing support. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief. Our next proclamation is for the 55th Annual Municipal Clerks Week, and we in Fortuna are very proud to have two of the best. And Councilmember Mobley is going to read this one.
Whereas the office of the municipal clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world. And whereas the office of the municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants. And whereas the office of the municipal clerk provides a professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies and agencies of government at other levels. And whereas municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all. And whereas the municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community. And whereas municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of the municipal clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state. And whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of the municipal clerk, now therefore be it resolved that Tammy Trent, Mayor of the City of Fortuna, do hereby proclaim the week of May 5th through May 11th, 2024, as Municipal Clerks Week and further extend appreciation to our municipal clerks, Siana Emmons and Ashley Chambers, and to all municipal clerks for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. Sign the 6th day of May, 2024, at the City of Fortuna in the State of California and in witness thereof, the Seal of Fortuna. I would just like to thank Ashley Chambers, who couldn't be here this evening, but appreciate all of her support. We appreciate the recognition tonight, and because I'm such a great clerk, I know to keep it short and sweet. So thanks.
Thank you, Siana. Our next presentation is every 15 minutes. I had the honor to be able to witness all of this, and it's a pretty amazing program.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to present tonight. And it was a pleasure to see the council in attendance during this event, and your support was definitely appreciated. So as we begin here, we want to cover a few things. It's myself, Lieutenant Everhart. This is School Resource Officer Dylan Burley. He was the driving force behind this program, and he did an outstanding job. Every 15 minutes is a DUI education and prevention program. This is to raise awareness for consequences of drinking and driving. This program started in 1995 by a Chico officer, decided to, hey, I'm going to go ahead, this is a problem, we need to show students the aftermath of drinking and driving, and we need to make a change. The 15 minutes portion of this relates to statistics back then that suggested that every 15 minutes in the United States, someone died in an alcohol-related collision. These statistics were staggering, and that's why we have this education and prevention program out there. It was quickly adopted across the nation by many agencies, and today, it's actually internationally adopted. We've all seen the devastating effects of drinking and driving firsthand. Humboldt County, recently in the media, it was publicized that Humboldt County ranked number one in the country in the percentage of drivers involved in fatal crashes under the influence of alcohol, drugs, and medication. Education is truly needed here. We've conducted this program several times over the years, and we are committed to continuing it. This is a two-day event that simulates the devastating aftermath of a DUI collision. The simulations are designed to be very realistic and truly showcase the devastation caused. Some of the images in this presentation will be graphic in nature, as it's very realistic. But it's important to make sure that we depicted it accurately so that the students and the people involved really understood what they're up against. In a moment, we'll be sharing an overview of the program that was conducted here just a few weeks ago. But first, I'm going to turn it over to School Resource Officer Burley, and he's going to share some of the things that made this program possible.
Thank you. First and foremost, the program wouldn't have been possible without the young men and women at the high school and their families participating. It was hard on them, just it was hard on everybody apart, and it couldn't have been possible without them. Additionally, because of the program, our partnership with Fortuna High School is stronger than ever. I worked closely with all the staff there, and we all got to know each other very well throughout the program, and you know, it worked out. And I can't be thankful enough to have such a good school to allow us to do it. We started planning this program in August. It finally launched at the end of April, so it took months of planning and preparation, a large amount of funding, and a significant amount of support from our community as well. We received a major grant from CHP and Cal OTS, and also received another grant from the Melan Grace McLean Foundation to help us make this program possible. We also received several other monetary donations and just services from all of our other local clubs. We received a huge donation from the Bevere Band of Riverdale Rancheria. They donated all the hotel rooms to us and breakfast and dinner the night before at the retreat. There is a full list of all the donors of this program that was posted on our Facebook page. The list is so long that I feel it's better to just go on there and read it. As the School Resource Officer, this was my first time ever doing this program. I was a part of it in 2012 as a student, so it's been full circle for me. Now I was a part of it, and now I got to run it. And you know, I'd just like to thank all my coworkers that were a part of it, couldn't have done it without them. And then also Sally Conley, she was a huge part of the program. She was my, you know, she was the co-captain of all this with me. She helped me with everything, and so I couldn't be thankful enough for her. It wouldn't have been possible without her helping me. It was just an amazing experience for me, like I said, full circle. I enjoyed it so much. When we first sat down and proposed the idea, I was like, oh, no problem, I can do all the work. By the end of it, I was like, okay, that was a lot of work, and I'm just glad that we were able to see the finished product, and it went so amazing. And I had to keep being reminded that the little things nobody else noticed, and it turned out amazing. So thank you.
Thank you, Dylan. So shown in the slide that's showing now are the students that participated in this event. You can go ahead and go to the next slide, please. All right, so a quick overview of this, we're not going to be able to cover everything. But during day one, those pre-selected students and staff were removed every 15 minutes throughout the school day. We had a Grim Reaper come in, as you can see in the photo up there. The Black Rose, drop it on the school desk. The kids were removed immediately after that. We had an officer come in, give, read a memorial, obituary, excuse me, written by their families. On top of that, those students that were removed were sequestered, no cellphone, no contact with any of their peers, any of their loved ones. At the same time that they were being removed, their parents were contacted at their workplaces by a police officer and a police chaplain and given a simulated death notification. Following that, a simulated DUI traffic collision and the aftermath was showcased for all of the students to see. The next slide we're going to go to is going to be a video showing the edited-down version. The original version is 25-plus minutes long, but for brevity and counsel tonight, we've narrowed it down to a couple minutes. This video is the DUI collision scenario and the aftermath from that, the immediate response. The video was produced, edited, and filmed by Justin Girmaldo. He did an excellent job. We would encourage everybody to go to our Fortuna Police Department Facebook page and click on the link, be able to view the video in its entirety. It's definitely worth watching. It's worth watching with your family, your loved ones, if you have drivers in your family, to spark some very good discussions. If we can go ahead and play the video?
911, what is your emergency?
Van Max, it's 14th Street, 14th High School. There's two cars, please hurry, there's somebody out here.
Are there any injuries?
Yeah, it looks like somebody's been thrown from a vehicle.
And are you involved in the accident?
No, no, please send somebody.
Okay, we've got emergency personnel on the way, it's 14th Street High School.
Yeah, I think they've been drinking or something, I saw them swerving or whatever.
Okay, emergency personnel, some more.
Thank you.
565, with five-way quarterback, traffic collision with injuries.
565.
565, with five-way quarterback, traffic collision with injuries. 14th Street parking lot, one subject ejected from the vehicle. Reporting parties believe the driver of one of the vehicles is possibly under the influence.
565, arriving at 56.
Okay, we can go to the next slide, please. As mentioned, this was an edited-down version of that. Sandy Peterson Photography was kind enough to get several really high-quality photos from that day. We're showcasing some of those here tonight, so you can see what happened. So immediately following the scenes you saw there, we worked in advance to plan and coordinate this simulated collision with fire, medical personnel. They extracted the simulated injured and deceased students from the vehicles. Students were transported by Life Flight, you see the helicopter there. They were also transported by ambulance, and one was transported by the coroner. One of the students was taken into custody, a simulated DUI arrest. If we can go to the next slide. And as you can see here, that every aspect was simulated to be as accurate as possible. It is the student that was arrested, we simulated being booked into jail and going through that process. Medical centers used this as a training experience and treated these injuries like they were real and simulated that. We had parents respond to the hospitals and interact with the medical staff. And after all of that with day one, while the students were sequestered, the students that were involved in that were able to go tour the jail, tour the morgue. They went to a retreat where they listened to speakers who've experienced and witnessed the devastation of DUI collisions firsthand. They got to ask questions, they got to interact with emergency services personnel, and at the end of the night, writing goodbye letters to their loved ones. The parents that night participated in a parent retreat and wrote goodbye letters to their child who was taken from them in a DUI collision. Next slide, please. Day two of the event started off with a large assembly where a simulated sentencing took place for the DUI driver, so the students and those involved can see the consequences of someone's actions. Followed by that, there was a memorial service. Speakers shared their personal experiences, and parents and students read their goodbye letters. Needless to say, this was an extremely emotional event, and there weren't many dry eyes there. The things that strike our emotions stay with us. And we use that to the best of our ability to make sure that we drive this message home of how important it is not to drink and drive. And in closing, we felt it most appropriate to end using the words of our chief of police when he closed that day. If we can go to the next slide, please.
In closing, thank you all for your attention, your support, and your commitment to keeping our community safe. Let us honor the memory of those we've lost by striving for a future free from the pain of impaired driving. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to present tonight, share this with the council and the public, and we'll be doing this again in four more years.
Thank you.
And it's guaranteed that that will save lives. Thank you so much for all the work you put into that. Now we have to get to real business here. First item is a discussion item, our draft proposed water and wastewater five-year rate adjustment.
Yes, thank you, Honorable Mayor and fellow council members. So as the council may remember, and I'm just pulling up a screen share right here, so bear with me for a moment. Excellent, okay, we're going. As the council may remember, back on April 15th, staff presented a draft rate study with proposed adjustments to water and sewer user bill rates over the next five-year planning period. I'll jump into a little bit more here in a second. I just also want to acknowledge our Finance Director, Aaron Felmy, and our Rate Study Consultant, Jacob Zingier, of which Kurt Placet is attending virtually this evening. I want to acknowledge their help in getting us to where we are now. So with that, a little recap of, you know, what's the purpose and what we're presenting here this evening. So as the council knows, and the public is generally aware, the City of Fortuna operates and maintains a potable water system in addition to a wastewater treatment and collection system. We fund these operations, the maintenance of the facilities, staff salaries, you know, all the costs that it goes to deliver the services to the community through monthly user bills, which are water and sewer rate bills. Most folks think about them as a combined bill, although they have the water component and the wastewater component to them. So our water and wastewater revenues over the last few years have been, our revenues have been pretty much at or actually below expenses, and we've spent the last couple of years here actually spending out of capital reserves. Long story short, given that we haven't had an increase in our user fees in approaching 14 years now, inflationary pressures, the economy at large, you know, market-driven forces all over the place have made it to where our revenue stream is not sufficient in order to cover our operating costs and to take care of our capital project need moving forward over the next five years. In addition to that, next year, I believe is the first year, and Aaron could correct me if I'm wrong, that we are projecting to be out of compliance with our 2017 water bond, which could affect future borrowing and interest rates for the city moving forward if we're not able to correct that with additional revenue. So with all these things in mind, staff beginning late last year began working towards completing a rate study, and that culminated, at least in the draft presentation of it, in April, at the April 15 council meeting, where we presented an initial proposed approach for adjusting water and sewer rates over the next five-year period. So we moved through that at that meeting, and we'll look at the numbers here again just to refresh everybody's memory. But the initial approach in the rate adjustments was to do a larger increase in year one. Again, it'd been about 14, almost 14 years since we had done a water or sewer rate increase, and the initial approach was based on basically having one big catch-up year, followed by a number of smaller inflationary adjustment years to kind of help us balance out over the five-year period. Of course, that resulted in a year-over-year increase of approximately, I believe, 50, maybe even 55% as a one-year increase. So the direction that staff received from the council at that time was to reduce that year-one impact and to do what we could to spread it out over as many of those five years as we physically could. So we went back to the drawing board, the city and our Jacob's team, and we looked at some various, you know, levers we could pull or knobs we could adjust in order to achieve a strategy that was more in line with that, with spreading those increases over a five-year period. So the principal things we did, and we'll look at these more in a moment, is one of the bigger things that we target with our water and wastewater funds is what we call capital reserves. Those are the reserves that essentially are the savings account for our utility systems. You know, they cover the rainy day, the unforeseen expense, the unforeseen project, things of that nature. We had initially targeted every year having minimum balances of $3 and $5 million in our water and wastewater capital reserve funds. We relaxed that by $1 million in the first few years, so we can draw down those accounts a little bit more. We do make those up in later years, but because we do that, we're able to phase in those increases more, as you'll see here in a moment. We had less flexibility on our wastewater side, given our large compliance project and a few other very critical projects we have in the CIP right now. But the other thing we're able to do specifically on the water side is delay some projects one or two years that are not necessarily critical projects. They certainly need to be completed, but we could push them out a year or two, again, in order to phase in our increases over time. And before jumping into a couple of graphs here, I will note that this updated approach in every year makes our debt coverage ratio for our bonds, we achieve that. So we are maintaining bond compliance with this updated approach. So beginning here with water, on the left-hand side, you'll see a table. Each fiscal year is shown as part of the five-year increases. Shown next in bold are the updated proposed increases, as you can see, spread across pretty evenly over the first four years at around 20%, with the last year a more... evenly over the first four years at around 20%, with the last year a more inflationary adjustment at 5%. If you look to the far right in the table, you'll see in red italics, that's the previous proposed increase strategy. Again, that would have had a really large increase in year one, followed by smaller ones in years after that. And going back to how we principally achieved that, you'll see coming up on the graph there, that's where in years two and three, what we really did was reduce those reserve targets. You'll see just to the right of that, we do get back to, those full reserve targets are pretty close to it in years four and five. So again, that's how we were able to spread those increases through the years, and now we have kind of that slower phased increase approach going forward with water as being proposed. On the wastewater side, a similar story, slightly less flexibility, given our large wastewater compliance projects that we're dealing with right now. But again, in the first two years, we were able to decrease the overall increase and then, and phase that in over the first four years. And again, we do that largely with reducing our overall target for the capital reserves in our wastewater fund as well. So percentages are great, but how does that translate to user bills? Of course, that's the first question everybody has. Before we look at what the updated proposed increase strategy would do, I want to take one quick step back. This is the graph that was presented at the April 15 meeting that would have showed what the current average Fortuna wastewater bill is versus what would be projected in year one specifically. So as you'll see, our average current water and wastewater bill combined is about $76, with the previously proposed increases that would have brought an average bill to about $112, or about a $37, $38 increase year-over-year. Moving over to our updated strategy, this shows, and I'll just cut right to the chase here, with the lower year-one increases, our average bill would go from $76 to $96, so about a $20 increase. Our minimum bill would go from about $62 to $78, so a $16 increase. So the big takeaway is, in the updated strategy, year one, we're able to cut about 50% out of what we were initially proposing to do as an increase. I'll just end here also by noting that this graph, which is part of the staff report as well, is also our year-one comparison graph across communities. So be it in the previously proposed approach or in the updated proposed approach, the city is still being able to meet, you know, all these requirements, our compliance projects, our bond coverage ratios, while still offering effectively the most competitive utility services that anybody is able to offer in the county currently. Jumping over to a quick table here, I know there's a lot of numbers, but the main ones that are of note are on the right-hand side in columns four and five. Those graphs were targeted at year one, again, what the bills would look like after an initial year adjustment, but we are talking about adjustments over five consecutive years. So in the fourth column, you'll see our current average annual, or manual, average, annual would be nice, that'd be a really low bill annually. Our average monthly bill at $76.10, that would jump to 96 in the first year, and then over the successive four years is projected to grow into the $160 range. You'll see to the right of that in red italics is the approximate annual increase to a user's bill based on the updated percentage approach that we're talking about over five years. So plus or minus a few dollars, about a $20 increase over the first four years before leveling off at that more inflationary adjustment in the fifth year. So that was the user fees. Again, those are the bills that our rate payers see every month for their water and sewer consumption in the City of Fortuna. The other item that we had some discussion on was what we call our capital connection fees for water and sewer. So our capital connection fees are different, those are one-time fees targeted at new users, so people that are buying into the system effectively, be that a new single-family residence or an existing house that maybe was on a well before, and now they want to buy water service. These fees are in our fee schedule and are meant to capture specifically the costs associated with increasing our infrastructure size, because we have more overall demand, because we're hooking new people up to it. So our initial proposal, and you'll see in the far left, for water, we charge a capital connection fees based on meter size, and those fees, depending on the size of the meter, which is proportional to the impact on the system, are between $2,100 and $200,000. So we were proposing to update them by the cumulative California Construction Cost Index and make a few other adjustments to what we call the LWEs, or the Living Unit equivalence of a meter, which would have resulted in the numbers you see, not in the red column on the far right, but in the fiscal year 2029. So we'd jump up from $2,100 for a standard single-family residence meter cost to $3,700 approximately. And of course, that's a pretty big increase in one year, it's about 71%, I believe. So the direction we received and what we are proposing to move forward with that is to ultimately achieve the same number as proposed, but do it over a five-year period. So we would phase that in each year, you would actually see, and that's what the column on the right in the red is showing, is the annual increase every year for five years that would be added to that category in the fee schedule in order to slowly and incrementally get us up to where we need to be in those connection fees. Similarly, for sewer, our current connection fee is about $4,400. We're targeting at getting to about $7,500, and we're going to achieve that, or we propose to achieve that, with five uniform increments of $625 increase in the fee schedule. Lastly, I just will note, although it's not shown in here, that we did look at connection fees across some other agencies that had this published as well, and we, similar to our user fees, we're, you know, we tend to be lower than Eureka, the Arcadas, the other ones in there. We're comparable, so, you know, we're charging an amount that is needed, but we're also able to deliver it a little bit more economically, which is great. So with that, I will just kind of highlight the next steps here. So in the staff report, and in this presentation here this evening, you've seen the updated proposed increases for water and sewer rates for the next five years. So what we are really seeking at this point from the council is direction on, if these are good and you would like to see us move forward with preparing the Proposition 218 process for noticing our rate payers of a pending change to the water and sewer rates. So if we do receive that direction, just a sneak peek on what that process looks like for us moving forward. The first item we would do is to finalize our rate study itself and the connection fee report. We held off on doing that until we received final concurrence from the council on this updated approach, but we're ready to have that done within the next couple of days. In addition, we would finalize what we call our Proposition 218 mailer in our Frequently Asked Questions handout. These would be developed and mailed out to all property owners and rate payers in the City of Fortuna to the best of our ability. And really, the idea of this is to provide a mailer that provides detail on that there is a hearing coming up, there are proposed increases to water and sewer, this is what they look like, and this is how you can protest it if you so choose to. In addition, we are sending out a Frequently Asked Question Sheet that kind of takes that next level and provides some reasoning behind, you know, what some of our issues are, why we need to increase rates, how long it's been since we've done it, what we are comparable to other communities. Again, that next level of information that people are inevitably going to ask as to why we're doing, or why we are proposing to do what we're doing. With that, we would target to get our mailers out sometime next week to start out our 45-day noticing period. We would also update our website to have some additional information, as we anticipate, of course, having some calls and interest from the community, so we want to be able to have a more repository where all this information is held in addition to the mailers. And lastly, after our 45-day noticing period, on July, on the regular council meeting on July 1st is when we're planning on holding our Proposition 218 hearing, where, you know, the public would be able to protest the rate increases if they so choose, and so long as the majority of property owners or representatives from a utility service connection in the City of Fortuna don't oppose, those rate increases would move forward effective after that meeting. So with that, I very much appreciate the time. As I mentioned, of course, our finance director's here in addition to Kurt Placedit with Jacobs, and we're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions from?
I have some comments. Brendan, I appreciate you and Erin and the consultant going back and doing this. I know it's a difficult decision to make, and people have dealt with a lot of inflation costs, so I think that this helps relieve the burden a little bit. So I do, I do appreciate you guys doing that.
Just a couple of things. Nobody likes to see increases, and council, certainly, we're in that position. I've mentioned before at the workshop and before that, that this subject has been brought up over the last four years by staff several times, at least every year. And council, for one reason or another, has decided to kick that can down the road and not take action. And so we are at that point now that we have to do something about that. So as much as it pains me and the council here, but I think that it's time that we have to do something, and we have to move forward with this the best way that we can. And we've made the suggestions, and staff has come back in answer to those suggestions, and we appreciate your hard work on that. So you and Erin, thank you much for your work.
It's not easy, and we threw some mandates from the state, and some getting cost estimates and a project outlined. We couldn't really set rates until we knew what we were going to be doing. And we're kind of stepping out now and have an idea of what needs to be done to comply with the state regulations, so we're stepping forward with that. Otherwise, we would have done this a few years ago. But you took our questions and comments last time and put them in a format and laid it out, and you've captured the essence of what we wanted to do, and we appreciate you for doing that.
Also, I wanted to bring up the fact that it's been 11 years, is it 11 years, since we've done an increase in our rates?
You know what? That was, that was commonly what we thought before, but, but Erin and I look back, and it's approaching 14 years now.
14 years that we haven't raised our water and sewer rates, and all of the expenses every year keep going up. So now we're drawing out of our reserves to pay for this. So unfortunately, you know, it's time that we have to do this now. So I'm going to open this up for public comment. You have three minutes. Anybody who would like to comment on this item? No comments? Okay, so I'll close public comment, and we're just to provide direction.
I think folks, folks are required. I think you've captured that, and you can move.
Yeah, just, just seeking direction from the council to move forward with the process, that's all we need.
I think we're in agreement.
Go forth.
Will do. Thank you so much, and it was a pleasure to work through these details with you.
Thank you. Thank you for all your hard work on this. Okay, our next item is oral public, or oral comments from the public. Any item that is not on the agenda, if anybody would like to speak to, you have three minutes. Everybody jump up here? Okay, well, we'll close public comment. We'll move to our consent calendar. Anybody wish to pull anything?
I make a motion we approve consent calendar items A and B.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll move on to city business, and I'm going to move item B first, so they don't have to sit through the rest of this. So our first item would be authorizing renaming Newburg Park, Newburg Park Field 1 in honor of Odell Shelton, including a memorial plaque.
Thank you, and good evening, council members. At the April Parks and Recreation Commission meeting, commissioners, I do see a few in attendance this evening here as well, received letters and testimonials from community members regarding Odell Shelton's lifelong dedication, passion, and commitment to baseball in Fortuna. Some of those in attendance were family members. There was a representative from the 76ers team, as well as the American Legion, and they wanted to also bring up the point that Odell Shelton did not only provide so much to this community, but he played a leadership role in all of Northern California, and really brought a lot to baseball in the whole area. The commission voted unanimously to recommend renaming Newburg Park Field 1 to Odell Shelton Jr. Memorial Field. And if approved, once the sign is designed, a ribbon-cutting and dedication ceremony at a future date would be determined, so that family, friends, community members, Parks and Recreation Commissioners, and city council and staff may be present for the dedication.
Thank you. Any comments from?
My only comment is, I think it's well-deserved.
Okay, we'll open public comment. Anybody from the public like to speak on this item?
Well, for those who haven't met, I'm Frank Mathis, one of your park commissioners now. It's been great working with Heather on this project and everything we've talked on the few meetings I've been to so far, and with the Odell family. And their desire, they're looking for a plaque that can be permanent, possibly mounted on the pit barbecue that's out there, a bronze plaque of a type. But I notice also out there, there are a lot of wood signs that have been made, one for Mel Birdy on one of the fields, it's really nice, they liked that also. It's up to the city and the council on what you really want to do, but I encourage you to do something. As Heather says, Mr. Odell put a lot of time and effort into the city. I know he sat on the council for a long time, and a lot of activity and a business owner, and I encourage you to do something with it. And whenever that happens, we'll be there to help do the dedication. And also, I'd like to compliment you on your choice for your Parks and Rec Director. I've been able to work with Heather on a few of the different little things here so far, and she's great to work with, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to comment? CNN will close public comment.
Madam Mayor, I would like to make a motion to authorize renaming Newburg Park Field Number 1 in honor of Odell Shelton to include a memorial plaque.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes.
I think, I'm remembering back, and I think Bob remembers this, and Frank may even remember the days of when Hardball 1 was called Odell's Field. And so it's coming back around now. Thank you.
Mayor Trent, if I could just make one comment kind of following. Appreciate the council's support there, and one of the things that we're really trying to do is run a lot of these issues, you know, when we first got the requests from the Shelton family to name it, it's like nobody on staff or very few of us had a lot of familiarity. And so it's, we see a real value in the Parks and Rec Committee, and I don't think they've been utilized over COVID, there were not a lot of meetings, and there was a long gap between having meaningful meetings, so it's great to have Frank and others on that committee that are very interested, and we've got some new life in the committee. So we really want to use that as a sounding board, really vet those things, and we had a lot of participation there. And so we hope to see that moving forward, that that committee really gives their recommendation to the council, rather than bringing things to the council that we haven't had that opportunity for other public feedback.
Thank you. Okay, now we'll move to item A. Authorize the city manager to award a construction contract for the P Street Sewer Replacement Project CPI 9121 to Mercer Frasier Company and establish a maximum contract amount of Staff report, please.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. In various areas of the city, namely the downtown vicinity, much of the wastewater collection pipe system is old, and some places have begun to fail. One such place is this block on P Street that those arrows are pointing to, that, that goes from that manhole cover in the bottom right, pretty much up to the top of the hill where you see that truck in the background. Many of this, much of this infrastructure is built out of clay pipe, which comes in three-foot sections, they put them together, and then they stuff a cord in there to seal it up. So that material, over the past 50, 60, 70 years, has begun to deteriorate in many places. And, and so thus, we've got inundation from groundwater, and in some cases, like this area of P Street, inundation from roots, from vegetation. This is an actual picture from our utilities crews, multiple visits over the past few years to this location to unplug, unplug this line. The P Street Sewer Replacement Project is part of a program that the city is undertaking The P Street Sewer Replacement Project is part of a program that the city is undertaking to inspect, assess, and assess its wastewater collection system to identify failing components for repair. The program is ongoing and a resultant of an agreement entered into by the city and California River Watch in lieu of a lawsuit they filed in 2016. Since that time, the city has been regularly video inspecting sanitary sewer lines to find defective assets. The replacement of this section, which is about 250 feet of six inch and four laterals that go to private properties, will, this replacement will stop that inundation and it will help provide better function and maintenance access for utility crews when they need to do work in the area. The P Street Sewer Replacement Project bid package was released and publicly advertised March 22nd and the bid period ended on April 29th, at which time we received four responsive bids. One, two, four, there we go. Of those four bids, Mercer Frasier came in with the lowest base bid of $115,000. City staff confirmed that the bid received from Mercer Frasier Company was fully responsive and that they have active licenses and registrations. The project, if the project is awarded, staff anticipate being under contract in May. Mobilization and construction is anticipated to take about a week and the project is scheduled to be completed by September of this year. The fiscal year budgeted $150,000 for this project to come out of the sewer capital reserve funds. The total requested project budget is $135,000, which allows for a 17% contingency in the event of mishaps or underground utilities are often a mystery and you run into surprises and challenges along the way. So with that, staff recommends authorization to award construction contract for the P Street Sewer Replacement Project to Mercer Frasier and establish the maximum contract amount of $135,000.
Thank you. Any questions from the council?
Just real quick. Years ago that, I mean, quite a few years ago, that was a dirt, basically a dirt driveway going up that hill. So at some point, the city took that over now and has paved that and that's a city roadway?
It is part of the city, yes.
Yes, P Street where we're doing the replacement there, where it goes up to the intersection of Garden Lane there is a city road.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
It's going to be a fun job.
Sure.
Okay, I'll open up to public comment. Anybody from the public have a comment on this item? Okay, CNN will close public comment.
I'll make a motion to authorize the city manager to award the P Street Sewer Replacement Project CIP 9121 to Mercer Frasier Company and establish a maximum contract amount of $135,000.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. And our last item in business is to approve a supplemental budget request for a new caterpillar loader for $220,000. Staff report, please.
Yes, good evening and thanks for having me again. This is an interesting little pop-up. As I get, as I will get into it here in a moment, our loader broke at the wastewater treatment plant and it just so happens that it happened at the end of a week or so ago and we had just enough time to bring this as an item this evening so we can move forward. But with that, I will jump right in. So down at the city's wastewater treatment facility, we do operate a composting operation. Composting is how the city processes and ultimately disposes of the solids that we take away as part of the wastewater treatment process. So, you know, we take water that is a collection of waste and water. We separate it to make, you know, clear water that can be discharged to the environment and then solids that we have to get rid of. So we do a composting operation and the most key piece of equipment we have in that is actually our loader. So we have big piles of compost. They need to be mixed all the time to be processed. Our loader down at the treatment plant is a 2008, the current one. We've had it for, I guess that makes it about 16 years now. It gets fully operated five to six days a week, 365 days a year. It's seen its fair share. In the last few years, we've noticed an uptick in the amount of overall maintenance that we have to do to it. So with that, in addition to its age, we've been identifying that we need to replace it. We actually had it as part of the upcoming draft budget that has been presented, the replacement of the loader. So turns out it couldn't quite make it to July 1st, not for lack of trying anyway. So we experienced a few Fridays ago, a pretty catastrophic failure that in and of itself would probably amount to about a repair budget of maybe upwards of 15 to 20% of buying the new loader as it is. So with that, we are bringing forward a supplemental budget request for what otherwise was planned as being part of next fiscal year's budget so that we could move out in replacing that piece of infrastructure, not infrastructure, but that piece of equipment that much sooner because it is a very critical item down at the treatment plant. In the short term, we do have an additional loader that we operate on the general services side, so we are co-opting that for use there. But, you know, our streets crews need to use it just as much sometimes and it's important that they have that back too. And if something were to happen and have downtime there, we'd really be in a rough spot in the meantime if we didn't replace this particular item. So with that, as you'll see in the staff report and the supplemental budget request, we are asking for $220,000. We have a quote that we believe is out the door at this point at about $215,000 and we're asking for a little bit extra because inevitably we have to do a little bit of outfitting on the equipment when it shows up and that give us the little bit of flexibility we have there. I will note that this is source well government pricing. So the state bids contracts for procurement of goods and materials and respondents such as CAT reply and they give prices to government agencies. So this quote is for the government contract price, which as you'll see in the attachment includes about a 50-ish thousand dollar discount on the piece of equipment itself. So we are getting the best price we can get and using these types of contracts, even though it's a large purchase, is consistent with the city's procurement policy specifically to 50070, Section C. So with that, that's everything I have there, I suppose, other than the fact that it would be paid for out of the city's wastewater operating reserve of which we have a total fund balance of approximately $11 million right now. And I will note in our rate study, we are thinking about things not only just like projects and operating costs, but we have actually thought about the replacement of something like this loader. And it is actually built into the capital recovery strategy in the rate study and the rate adjustments that we had discussed earlier. So it is something that we will be recovering the cost of over the next five years. With that, we do have Annie Bowles, our chief plant operator, and Bob Nat, our general services superintendent who oversees our fleet as well. They can answer any of the more detailed questions or tell you all the gory details of the failure. But with that, very happy to have the time this evening and we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from council?
I don't have many questions, but I can tell my fellow council members that once equipment starts failing, you're just dumping money into it.
Is there any chance that that could be sold surplus and maybe?
Yeah, that's exactly what we would move to do next. Once, you know, with the confirmation of being able to receive the new loader, our next step would be to get it ready to be surplus and then to go to auction with the rest of the stuff we have now. Although we certainly need a new loader, this one for the right buyer still, of course, has a salvage value and we'd look to move forward with that process as quickly as we can.
Okay, open public comment. Anybody from the public like to speak? Okay, CNN will close public comment. You have a motion?
I make a motion to approve a supplemental budget request for $220,000 for a new caterpillar loader.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, now the city managers' report.
Thank you, Mayor Trent. Just to review the upcoming meeting schedule, as we have had a number of special meetings for the budget, we'll have one more this Thursday, May 9th at 9 o'clock AM here at City Council Chambers. And then our next regular scheduled meeting will be on May 20th at 6 o'clock PM at the normal time here at Council Chambers. Our next Planning Commission meeting is scheduled for May 8th, the regular time. Our next Measure E meeting date is a way out, September 17th. We'll give our Measure E committee a little bit of time off between now and then. Our next RONER Committee Recreation and Park District meeting is on June 5th at 2:30 PM. And those are going to be held now at the council chambers and the rec hall. One of the things we wanted to be able to do with our, oh, sorry, that's RONER Rec Meeting. What I was, our Parks and Recreation Committee will also have them meeting in the future at City Hall too, so it can be recorded and people can attend virtually and we have the setup for that. So our next Fortuna Business Improvement District meeting is on May 28th at 8:30 AM. So just a few things to report. We're moving forward with the North Main Gateway Beautification Project. I've been getting help from our engineering department. Matt's been helping with the quantity estimates and Sherry's been helping with pulling together a public meeting. We haven't quite scheduled it yet and the environmental documents, so we're moving that forward and our hope is to get a final budget for that and to serve as a basis for the cooperative agreement with Caltrans for the Clean California Grant. But we're getting some nice renderings. But we will have one public meeting, so the council would be welcome to attend. We're considering doing that at a Planning Commission meeting as well, so the Planning Commission could decide that it's a proper placement and design. So look to see some scheduling for that, but right now we're thinking the, not next week, but the following week, so the week of the 20th for a public meeting.
Did you make sure that we're all notified when that?
Absolutely. Yeah, and then I'll say we've had a lot of activity lately on the mill district. I'll bring a schedule forward in the near future, but that project's moving ahead. We have draft documents that staff has been reviewing and we expect in a couple of weeks to be able to post the draft documents for public review as well as share those with the owner. And the owner of the largest number of parcels on the mill site has been very active in trying to recruit new businesses, so we're meeting with them. We've got some assistance from county economic development. The state Office of Business and Economic Development has reached out to us also and they want to be more aware. And so there's a lot of activity on behalf of the owner to try to attract new businesses there. And there's things that the city can do by helping to channel grants and efforts to streamline the workforce and think of other things that could be done to help maybe finance some of those improvements that'll be needed at the mill site. And then lastly, I had the opportunity to stand in as an alternate for Supervisor Bushnell and do a tour of the Vineyard Offshore Wind Facilities that had been, have been constructed outside of Martha's Vineyard. And so it was a really, a very comprehensive tour with a full day of learning and seeing what the port facilities look like for Vineyard Offshore and hearing about their community outreach and all their job training and the concerns of the community. And then we had a second day where we were able to do a tour and actually go out and see those on a boat and hear from elected officials, town managers, technicians, and the whole group of people that were involved in the decision-making process as well as those who maintain them. And some of the jobs created some of the environmental issues and concerns. I'll be probably, I'll be putting a presentation together, probably to share at a Chamber of Commerce meeting or another meeting. I know the county's looking at putting together a presentation too, but it was really an eye opener to be able to go see all of that firsthand. And there's a lot of things that really struck me that, you know, some things that could be good and other things that, you know, it's hard to say, you know. But seeing the port development and the facilities there and that working harbor was actually pretty exciting to see, you know, that kind of production on a harbor. And it really seems like that could work well for the community, you know. But at the end of the day, windmills, these wind turbines, they take up space and there's always a cost to taking up, you know, square miles in your ocean and fishermen might have something to say about that. So there's a lot of community dialogue that's going to be happening and I'll weigh in with my observations at some point as well. That's all I have to report.
Thank you. So any future agenda items? No? Okay, we'll move to council reports. Council member, Losi?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have nothing to report. Haven't been to any meetings.
Okay, that's your fastest report ever. Council member Mobley?
I have nothing to report.
This is good. Council member Johnson?
Well, I have a little bit here. First off, last Friday was the Redwood Division of California League, League of California Cities, Redwood Division met in Ria Del and they did a good job of hosting. I'm not going to talk about the whole thing. I'll leave something for you to bring in there. But they did two things that came up in the legislative meeting was a lot of the bills related to retail theft was the largest one and as well as some other petty theft type stuff. And it seems like there's a lot of bills that the legislature is bringing force, bringing forth without a lot of a strong enforcement arm. They're passing bills but not passing consequences along with it. And laws have two purposes as a deterrent and punishment. And you can pass a law as a deterrent, but without a punishment portion, it's not going to be much of a deterrent. So that's just something I saw. The other is the California Business Roundtable measure to revise the state constitution regarding funding opportunities and relating all the way into the fee schedule, fees for renting buildings and fields and our water rates, things such as that. And it's not making things easier, it's making things more difficult. So, and I'll leave some of that to you and you were going to talk to other people about that too, so. But it was a very interesting meeting, informative, learned a lot of things there. Moving on to the next thing, I have a historical commission meeting this week on the 8th, Wednesday, as well as an HCOG meeting next week on the 16th. I haven't seen an agenda yet, so I don't know what the HCOG one's going to be about, but I'll report out on that when, at our next council meeting. And that's what I have.
Okay. That meeting actually was pretty interesting. We did go over a lot of bills and I do have some letters of support that I would like the council to look at. It's probably the best process I've seen as far as law enforcement on being able to put some teeth back into some laws and actually be able to punish people for crimes again. So I'm really hoping those will go and we have the letters of support coming for those that we'll probably ask for signatures on. The California Roundtable one, as Johnson was saying, is horrible because basically what they want you to do is only be able to charge the least amount possible for any service. So, and that even comes to like if you have two applicants apply for a job, you've got one that's really, really qualified, but they require a little bit higher of a wage, you have to require the one with no, or hire the one with no qualifications because they're cheaper, you know. And none of this stuff makes any sense, some of the stuff that they're doing. They won't allow you to cover your costs because you've got to keep everything so inexpensive and so many, the way it's written, it's one of those that sounds good, but it's terrible. So more information on that will be coming out. And I was going to ask the Parks Director something, but she's already gone, so I'll ask that later. And I just want to say that it's pretty exciting to see the parks full of all kinds of ballgames going on now and actually see some sunshine occasionally. It just makes everybody happy. So I think that's all I have to report and now we're going to adjourn to closed session and that is conference with labor negotiators, city negotiators, city manager, Merritt Perry, employees, organization, Fortuna Employees Association and Fortuna Police Employees Association and Unrepresented in accordance with Section 549...
No.
57.6. Employees Association, and Unrepresented, in accordance with Section 54957.6 of the Government Code. Oh, I thought you wanted to say something. Okay. Do we have any public comment on closed session?
That was it.
Okay. We'll excuse you. Okay, do we have a motion to move to closed session?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.